Ready?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda this evening is the review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody's got any additional thoughts or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to share them, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed. Takes care of the minutes. Item three on the agenda, Golden Colonel Annexation. You've got some information for us, sir.
That's right, yeah. Since our last meeting in, well, I think it was October, we have received two annexation petitions and Mr. Schutie's here tonight to talk about the second one, but we'll just run through this one. Wanted to show you kind of where we're at. The resolution was approved by the Township Board earlier this month and with the City Council at the last meeting. This is a piece of property that is lying to the southwest of Casson, along Highway 34, between Highway 34 on the north side and Highway 14 on the south side. Actually, it's west of Sheldon's house, so kind of that area of town. Two of the parcels are already included in the city limits and the other parcels are being added in now. So that's one that's moving forward. I don't have a final use for that property yet, so we're bringing that in as a designated holding district, DH District, under the new city code, which would mean that at some point in the time in the future, we would have a rezoning hearing when the final determination of the use is, you know. I could see a couple of very good uses. I mean, obviously residential is a possibility there, but also it would seem if there is any kind of commercial, you know, development, you've got the railroad tracks and you've got two, you know, heavy-duty roads there, that would be a decent spot for something as well. So just want to bring that to you as informational.
Is there any type of timeframe that is stipulated in when a final zoning needs to be determined?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And one other thing I would add relative to that one is that the comprehensive, this is outside of the comprehensive plan's kind of current growth area. And so depending on when they come forward, it would be something that there would be a comp plan amendment associated with it as well, but it's part of that long-range planning area.
It is in our realization area, but yeah.
It isn't.
It wasn't necessarily intended.
Wasn't anticipated.
Anticipated in the next, yeah, five to 10-year period, so. That's all I've got on that.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on to item number four, and I don't want to mispronunciate this name. Is it the Schutie Annexation?
That's right. And Mr. Schutie's here today too, and Brad as well, who's got a staff report in there. So you've got information regarding this. It's just got some borders, and this was another petition that we received in November. I think it was early November, and we had a couple of meetings with Dean and talked to him about what he's looking in, that sort of thing, and I think that's sort of what we wanted to talk about tonight a little bit, is what we're kind of, you know, looking at there. And I know, Brad, you've got some things you wanted to bring up, so with that, go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, I will just highlight kind of at a, I'm going to stay at a pretty high level, but if you have specific questions about the plan, Mr. Schutie's here to talk on the specifics of it. This is a concept review. Again, this is something where we like to use concept reviews as sort of a risk assessment. The developer, property owner's going to, you know, spend some dollars doing some planning and work through a process. And so this is an opportunity to put it in front of Planning Commission and Council to get an understanding of what are the big issues that they need to be aware of so that they can determine where the plans go in terms of a final entitlement process. So I'm just going to hit on some of the highlights of what I identified in the plan as the bigger picture challenges. The first one is on page four, the land use map. We have a land use map in that Planning Commission report. The concept that Mr. Schutie's engineer submitted essentially has one area that deviates significantly from the comprehensive plan, and that is the area on kind of the southeast side that fronts on Highway 57, and it's essentially north of what they label as 12th Street, which would be a new street. There, an area there that the comprehensive plan identifies as high density, and they're suggesting a change to commercial. So let me talk a little bit about the context of that. When we did the comprehensive plan, one of the things we looked at was how much commercial do we need to meet the commercial service needs within the city? And the reason we identified those parcels further to the south as higher density was to compress the commercial at the node of the future 16th Street extension and Highway 57, simply because if you think about the total volume and mass of commercial retail, probably not that much is needed to serve the population. We then added higher-density residential to the south there, thinking that we could break up Highway 57 so it's not simply a long stretch of commercial. It's more of a design aesthetic. So those were the two key reasons that we looked at having some higher density. Having said that, the point that is being made, I think, is part of the request to change the land use there to commercial is to reflect the idea of intensity of development moving down from a Highway 57 down to the residential neighborhood to the west. And so the idea was to front that with commercial. So there's one change there that I think is worthy of a conversation. If there's issues or questions or concerns the Planning Commission had, it would be good for Mr. Schutie to be aware of those. The second thing I want to talk a little bit about is, again, I want to keep it at a higher level. The concept plan shows a number of streets that provide services to development within the area. There are a couple of key things to point out. Number one, Highway 57, access on the Highway 57 is going to be dictated largely by MINDOT. We'll need to follow their spacing standards. The improvement for 16th Street is an important part of this because obviously 16th Street runs along the north side of the property, and the roundabout is certainly going to affect where you land with access points on the Highway 57. We have shared this with MINDOT. They have some comments, and those comments don't exactly align with what the applicant has presented. And so that's something where we're going to need to work through that with the applicant and MINDOT to figure out what is the right access point. One of the things that we'll look at is, that's really important for the concept level, is determining where are those touchdown points? And if you remember when we talked about the transportation map amendment that we're talking about with the comp plan, it's not as critical to us on where those streets align through the site. It's more critical on where those streets touch Highway 57, where those streets touch County Road 21 or 8th Avenue, and where those streets touch 16th Street, and where are those connection points for how circulation happens through the site. So they've provided a concept here that connects with a couple of different key places, but also has some issues with 57 that we'll have to work through with the applicant and MINDOT. There is a green corridor that goes through the site. They've identified that as a drainage area, and that's an area where we can also explore longer-term, how does that site fit from a park and trail perspective? How do we leverage that for the park and trail component and connections, but also work for the developer to figure out stormwater? They've got some other challenges to the site that they have to work through in terms of easements and some stormwater drainage. And so this is a concept that kind of begins to think about that. I know that the applicant has some thoughts on sort of phase, phases that would happen. As Tim mentioned, annexation is already started on it. They will still need to come forward with that comp plan amendment from high-density to commercial. Then they will also need to come forward with a plating process, and that plating process would include a more specific rezoning for the portions of the site that they want to rezone today for development purposes. If they want to rezone the whole thing, they could certainly do that, but we can, we probably would see something that comes in in a phased approach, and the rest of it would be that holding pattern, holding zone that we've established until such time as they wish to do development. So kind of at a high level, that's the gist of the concept. Again, this is just a discussion. There is no action that's necessary for this, and Mr. Schutie's here to ask, respond to any questions or clarify anything, should I have misstated anything. I cover everything that's key on that.
I think so.
So I yield for questions.
One question, so just to your point about the road spacing. I know you've got, you heard back from MINDOT, and what was it, like 660 feet or something like that, I think, was what they said was the right spacing? I forget.
Yeah, MINDOT has spacing guidelines, and so if you look at this segment of the corridor, they're going to be supportive of intersections at 13th Street and an intersection at 11th Street. 11th Street, however, doesn't line up with the property owner's property. That becomes a bigger issue that we have to work out if that's where they would allow for access. And that doesn't mean that there might not be some other limited access that they would be willing to work with, but all of that has to be worked through with MINDOT as the permitting agency for those access points. There also will likely be, and I haven't spoken with Mr. Schutie about this, we got comments back from them Friday, there will also likely be some kind of improvements that will have to be made to 57, whether some kind of turn lane configurations. All of those, we don't know what those are until we dive into the next level of detail at the plating process, but we can start working through some of those issues with the MINDOT and the applicant so as we progress through the site planning process. So I don't know what the design solutions are. They're going to want to see streets that don't, that don't misalign. They want full intersections. And if there is something that does misalign, then the question becomes, is it a public street, is it driveway? Is it right in, right out? You know, what are the stipulations to it?
So with the 11th Street existing, that, based on MINDOT recommendations eliminated that 12th suggested?
Well, I think MINDOT's comments, I wouldn't say it's a recommendation yet, but MINDOT would be supportive of full intersections at 13th and 11th Street. 12th Street is more of a question mark to them. And so that's something where we have a lot of work to do to figure out if an access point is at 12th Street, how does it work? If not, where is it that provides access to that parcel, and how does it get done if it affects other properties, which means then the city would end up having to play some kind of role unless MINDOT plays a role. But more likely, MINDOT will say, you have to do this, and we have to figure that solution out if we want the development to work. So it's going to be a collaborative process to figure out how that happens, and that's why we start with these concept reviews, to get all those issues out on the table and start talking through them. And that's where all of a sudden the issues start to play.
According to, it goes in between the two buildings almost.
Yeah, so then it becomes a, you know, how important is it that it be there? And one of the things that have to happen. So that's part of what I think has to be explored.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, you only have to be so far out.
For 12th Street, right? Right? And that's, like I said, that's, we need to have that conversation with the DOT, and what does that mean, and try to figure that out. So I think there's just some work that has to be done on that.
So looking at the development, I see there's some R3 in there, kind of right in the center of everything. So we do have some multi-housing that can.
Right. So for the concept, you know, they showed a variety of housing, which I think is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the question would be, once, you know, they get to that phase, what's the right design configuration and layout? I think there's a little work that would need to be done on that. But the idea of mixture of housing development, I think, is a good.
We're not getting rid of it along the road. We're kind of moving it to another location, swapping whatever.
Yeah, you can make that point.
And then what is the land zone in between Dodge County and, or just north of 13th Street? The larger, looks like larger lots?
You're talking about the 1.82 acre, or which one?
The stuff that's along the Greenway, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, where it's going through there a little bit, just.
Along 13th Street.
Yeah, on the north side of 13th, in between the two retention ponds.
My guess is that would be. Large lot residential, but I think the other challenge there is you've got that easement through there. So like I said, I think there's some design work that has to be done that can better utilize the site. I think that's a later phase, if I understand right, so we've got time to do that. We also don't know, you know, if the county's supportive of access of 13th Street out to County Road 21, so we got to kind of think through that as well. And, you know, is there a, is there a, an open space play along that corridor as well as maybe the park component to that from a park dedication standpoint? So there's a lot of things we can continue to work through. All of those things, I think, would be a later phase detail, but good comments to make, so for sure.
12th Street northwest, then you have to turn and go north to get on the Schutie Drive. Is there a way you could line that up to make it more, with that jog, then now you start looking like you've got 7th Street turning across 57?
We had that conversation, I think, at a staff level too, and Brad, I think we would kind of guided that we thought that maybe sort of smoothing that intersection out would be a good idea, because, yeah, we don't want to have a jog like that, that just creates, I mean, going to a dead end basically doesn't make a lot of sense.
Just creates another problem for traffic flow.
I don't know, Brad, if you remember.
Maybe not.
Yeah, we did, and I think those are things, you're right, those are things.
I mean, this was an initial proposal that Mr. Schutie said. Here's the, you know, so think about, the way I think about it is, okay, there's the intended uses, so, you know, commercial on the highway, some higher density, maybe mixed use in the middle, and then sort of guiding towards, you know, R1 or something like that. And to me, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, we have a really, we have a good corridor, and there's commercial to the south already, so that we change that a little bit, I don't think that's an issue. So there's the uses, and then there's the actual, how are we going to use the property internally? And that's, that's probably the bigger challenge, like Brad was kind of alluding to, is, you know, a couple of these intersections, they make sense, they work already. You know, we also, you know, for Mr. Schutie's sake, is looking, he's looking at, how can he make this as cost-effective for himself as well? And that's something that we have to keep in mind. You know, at the same time, you know, I've had conversations, we're looking at moving forward with this 16th Street extension, which for the city is going to be quite an expensive undertaking. Is that where it's looking, that's where it's going to go, or not? That's where it's trending, right? In terms of design, that, you know, so I guess that's something to think, keep in mind too, is that the first street that may get built is probably going to be 16th Street northwest, and that then creates kind of the backwards effect from, you know, towards the south. So those are, those are factors that have to be kind of considered too. So, so I mean, I think if, you know, one thing would be, are we comfortable with the uses? You know, if we think that, okay, the uses seem like they make sense, that's one thing that Mr. Schutie needs to know so that he can go, okay, now I just need to work on my alignment of how I make this lineup so that it's cost-effective for me, but also fits with what MINDOT's going to allow and the city would like to see, you know.
I, I see that commercial along 57 would be fine. You already have commercial on either side of the property now.
Right.
Along 57. And then residential you have on the other side, has the frontage road before.
Exactly, and that is nice because it does provide that buffer for those folks. It won't be the traffic issue as much as it would if they were right on 57. So no, that's true. I mean, also with the school being there on the northeast side, I mean, you've got so much traffic already that I think it definitely is going to play into the usage of those, you know, property. I mean, it's going to be more a popular site for some sort of commercial business, you know.
Yeah.
Do we know, or have we seen anything on the equipment proposal to be more?
You know, they're, they're working with MINDOT right now too.
On how that's, you know, their access and what kind of access off of 16th that they might want, and.
Yeah, they're working with, they're working with.
It would be nice to try and.
North-south corridor, one of the things we'll work on is to make sure those north-south corridors connect.
And I know they're working with MINDOT as well. So I mean, that's, MINDOT has a lot of control because it's their road. You know, they really, they say, hey, that's how we want it, you know, and we'll, we'll work with them the best of our ability, but we're working with them on the whole reconstruction too right now, and the roundabout at that, and 16th Street intersection, which is going to add a whole nother level of complexity to this. When is it going to get done?
This next year.
I would just say, we've already amended our plan a little bit to make sure that the north-south streets align, you know.
I said, if they're going to do a roundabout, can't do it at the same time.
Despite about 12th Street.
Didn't wait forever.
I really don't see that as being a highly-traveled corridor. The 16th Street is going to be your main corridor for people traveling east to west. So I think 12th Street is going to remain more of a, of a residential street. So I mean, you shouldn't have the traffic on it that you would on 16th.
To me, the land use suggestion all makes sense to me. The, the street alignments, yeah, there's still work that needs to be done, including the 2nd Avenue, where does that go to the south?
Not just dead end?
Into the park.
Yeah, it's in the park. Which one are you talking about?
It's like right in behind the shop.
Second.
Behind the, the park shop.
Yeah, I mean, part of the issue there, as Dean alluded to, is we do have a, kind of an orphan parcel there that Bigelow, Mr. Bigelow owns, or Bigelow's, you know, Industries owns there, that will need to be accessed too. And we don't know exactly what his plan, I mean, he hasn't told me, I'm not sure, I'm sure he hasn't probably told anyone yet. He probably may not even know what he's planning on doing right now. I think they just cropped that, so, you know, marginally crop it. So I mean, he, he did tell me that he was interested potentially bringing in as well. So that's, that's going to be interesting to see whether that's cul-de-sac'd off. You know, I could see that as a desirable, you know, right by the park there, it could be relatively attractive for, for some sort of residential townhomes or something like that. I don't really know though what will be the end-use there for that parcel.
Did Josh Fearstead vacate that building that was there since he moved?
On a month, a month rent, so that can be vacated at any time.
I know even when he moved out south of town.
He's using a shop building down there.
He's got, yeah.
Got a lot of space down there.
Out there.
Yeah. So I don't know, I don't know his status, but it sounds like you do, Dean, and I mean, I, I'm not super worried. That's a marginal building, like you said, as it is, so. But yeah, I mean, I, that'd be a question to ask, you know, Tony, what they're thinking and when they're thinking. You know, he's got a lot of lots coming to market this year, so.
If there's any other questions, I got a meeting I need to get to, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, you've done a great job. Thank you. We'll keep whacking away at it, don't worry.
Those are papers?
Uh, no, that's a public copy.
So in terms of road alignment, I mean, I guess the one thing that jumps out at me is that 13th Street, you know, the MINDOT may want that intersection, but I'm just not sure how that works, or if we, I mean, the current, the current way it's set up doesn't make a lot of sense to me because of the stub road there. I don't know if we'd make that into a private road, or, I don't know, Brad, what, what do you say there?
I would say there's a design exercise, and we could look at a number of different concepts. What it's going to come down to is the parcel that Mr. Schutie needs for their first phase, and then it's going to come down to cost, and the cost of connecting or going over the Greenway, that creek area. And I think that's largely what it's going to come down to, but.
What is that first phase that he's looking at?
I, I don't know. I was hoping he would stay here to, to speak to that, but I think there's, there's some specificity to the parcel sizes that they have there with an end-user that we need to work through with them. And so I, I think there's just some design scenarios that need to happen here, and we have to realize and I think recognize, lines don't have to be straight, they can move around and curve. And we want to avoid, we want to avoid those weird jogs in streets, even if the street's not going to be a through street. And we've communicated that to them, and we just have to work through that with them.
But this whole thing doesn't even need to be connected to Manorville Avenue, doesn't it? Can't it all be fed off of the 16th Street addition?
I think, in theory, yes, but as you talk to retailers, there's still a belief that, well, we need a direct access, and you're going to have to fight that.
Yeah, there's just, there's just so much, so many access points on Manorville Avenue.
Right, yep, I agree. And MINDOT's going to tell you, they don't want more, and that's part of that access management plan. And so I think what, if we can find out a win-win solution, that's what we want to do, where we can find, figure out a way to connect those streets, and if there's less street infrastructure.
It's going to save him a lot.
Not a win for them. And so I think there's a design exercise here that, that.
If you look at that 12th Street and the Schutie Drive, you'd be able to make a slight curve into that and take partway out of there. You'd lose a couple lots, but. You'd lose part of the lot.
Yeah, but you can redesign it to find them, yeah.
Use them up, because what concerns me, if you made that commercial right there and then you go to residential, you don't want that turn and turn. You want to make it just a nice even flow, or a straight line, one or the other. Because when you start dealing with a commercial next to the residential.
Would the road become Manorville Ave, Avenue become 30 miles an hour all the way out to the roundabout? I think that there would be a speed change based on the roundabout more than anything else, I think.
Has to be controlled.
It slows down coming in and it slows down coming out, so I'm not sure if it would be all the way, I'm not sure if it would be all the way along the corridor, but I mean, I think there's a good chance that would be. The difference is, once you slow it down to 30 miles an hour, I can start to see where retailers want a direct access because, you know, traffic is moving at a, you know, normal pace, and it's not like you're going to be able to get up to 50 miles an hour and slam on your brakes for the roundabout.
Be surprised what people can do. I understand that. Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. They shouldn't be, that's for sure.
I think from, from what I'm hearing is folks are comfortable with the, the commercial land use shift.
Yeah.
And there is a comment, just to make sure, we have a coherent and connected street network. I think that's all the farther you really need to go with it. We don't want to all profess to know how to design streets, but those points that you've made about connectivity and about coherence make sense, and that's what we need to communicate to them so they hear it. They've heard it from us, now they've heard it from you as a planning commission.
And we just want to stress, obviously, this is just a, this was their concept design. It also falls into the, you know, the terminology change for us from the GDP.
Correct.
To concept design. So those are different things legally speaking, and I think that's guided us towards, you know, calling it a concept instead of the GDP, so.
When you start using the term GDP, it connotates a planned unit development. And if they want to do a planned unit development, they can do that, but the GDP is a much more specific part of that PUD. So we have communicated them, to them, their engineer, to know its concept as where we're at, so.
I don't know if you'll be talking to them tomorrow or anything, but if they wanted to do the comp plan amendment or rezoning and do that for the January meeting, I need that by next Thursday?
Yeah, I have communicated that to them.
Okay.
We will reach out to them after our Thursday staff discussion.
Okay.
And I have told last, we're going to talk to them this week, but we want to work through it at a staff level first.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, gentlemen?
No, it'd be a great addition to town.
Let's see something going there.
Yeah.
Item five on the agenda, fence discussion.
Maybe Glenn, if you want to talk about this one?
Sure. There was a complaint that the neighbor had a fence a foot and a half in from the property line. I contacted Mr. Kingsley.
Wife?
Yeah, I contacted his wife, and he's here tonight to explain to you because he informed me that he had started this project in July, and I said, if you can prove it, that's fine. And did you come up with any receipts or anything?
I did. Should I just talk here? You guys want to?
Yeah, go right past him.
So I contacted Gophers, day one call. I believe the date is July 29th of the call. There's another receipt for the fencing materials that I purchased on the 28th. That's what I was asked to bring. Yeah, and so I was diagnosed with COVID early August, really pulled me back. I'm not a professional fence builder. And so just through all these complications, the fence was put back. I had items on that, the receipt that were on back order that I didn't get until, gosh, the end of August, when I was in no state to put up the fence. And, you know, it was just unseen circumstances that led to this delay in the fence build, but I totally intended, I'd talked to my neighbors, I'd informed them that I'm putting up a fence. So this complaint, the, the lines were up for two, two months. If they had a problem with it, they could have wrote me a letter and put it on my, on my door. I'm not a hard person to get along with. You know, you, whoever called in, they won't let me know who it was. I'm not a foot and a half off of any property line. I'm two and a half feet off of the back property line, which I believe the complaint came from. So we're arguing over a half a foot. You know, I was very respectful on where I put the fence. My father told me not to put it on the property line because then they can do whatever they want to their side of the fence. So I listened to him. I came down to the city hall down here early July and asked if I was to pull a permit. Um, at that time, there was only a talk of 36 inches in the front yard. We don't deal with civil disputes between neighbors. Um, and then that changed August 12th, I believe.
Does that give you what you need to go back to them?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, realistically, I guess in this case, it looks like he started his fence before the change was made. So we haven't received that information until tonight. So I'm having Linda make a copy of that, and hopefully we won't have any more issues like that, but.
Yeah, I totally intend to maintain both sides of the fence in a beautiful manner. Um, there's no malicious intent with this fence. Everybody else on my block has fences to the property line, and I just, I don't look at the city ordinances daily, monthly, or weekly, so.
Unless you have any questions, I think we would, we'd go ahead and allow that, based on the fact that he started before it began.
I do not, but unless somebody else has a thought or a comment, feel free to, okay.
Any questions, Dwayne?
No. We thought documentation was proved, started before we changed the process, so. He's grandfathered in.
Okay. Sounds good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, you have to see him.
Yeah, you can have, do you need these back?
No, they're just print.
Okay.
Thanks.
Part of the process, it's communication.
Yeah, and he could have brought those in earlier, and it would have made it a little easier for us, but.
Yeah.
And he was told that, and then he told me that he was going to be in Florida during this meeting, so. Because I told him, just scan it to me, we can, we could have done this administratively instead of bringing it here, but.
I mean, it doesn't bother me. Like I said, it's just furthering the conversation about these things, and.
Right. But now also, it's on record here.
Right.
For future.
And then we're aware of it, too, if it gets brought up.
Yep, yep, yep. Since we're talking about fences, any other issues, challenges, concerns?
Well, you know, I did send out letters to the, the folks on Manorville, and I never got a response back.
Okay.
They were invited to come to this meeting tonight, and I was going to be on vacation, so I figured this would be perfect for Brad. I figured Brad would just take charge of it, but I'm here and they're not, so I don't, I don't really know what other action you really want us to take with that one, because I suspect that they're not going to respond to us.
Glad you're here, because I have no idea what you're talking about.
Exactly. We had a good time, Brad. You and Linda would have had it, you would have done well. Um, so I mean, you know, I'm not really sure what we want to do. I mean, the only enforcement action we could take is tearing it down, basically, you know, or cutting it off.
What did your letter say?
Uh, just asked them to come in and discuss the matter with the planning commission. And that was the direction I got from, from you all, you know, at our last meeting, was to invite them to come, and, um, so I, I mean, there isn't a great mechanism for, uh, you know, I don't want to get into another lawsuit over this. I don't think it's worthwhile, from my own perspective, but, you know, I'm open to suggestions from, obviously, from folks.
I guess do you send them another letter that says, well, disappointed, we didn't see it's planning commission, and you haven't followed a variance, so, you know, the next action will have to be more drastic, and, you know, one more chance to come in, and, I mean, because partly, you're still setting a precedent that, well, I didn't know, and, you know, so how many times do we, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, are we actually planning on taking any action with them or not? And, you know, I'm not going to threaten something that we wouldn't follow up with, that I don't feel the council would be willing to follow up on. I mean, I definitely hear where it's coming from.
So that's a question for.
Yeah, I've got two councils, I've got two councils over here.
From a council level, I mean.
I was going to start, I mean, what stops anybody else from doing the same thing, and, you know, putting up a fence that doesn't meet the code or the ordinance?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a greater question of, you know, what stops anyone from doing it?
Well, but ultimately, you've given precedent that it's okay to do it without, you know, what's the point of asking for permission? I can just put it up, and, you know, the city's not going to do anything anyway, so why worry about it?
Yeah, as I said, I mean, I'm open to whatever guidance you guys have. I mean, I, without, you know, I don't expect that I'll be ordering the staff to go in and tear it down. But, because I think that's probably, I don't know, Brad, what do you see in the metro? What do they do up there? They just go in there and tear fences down in White Bear Lake, you know, that kind of thing?
Well, it depends on what the issue is. But your point that you're making now is, is are we prepared to implement it? And if the answer to that is no, then you should change your code and allow them to happen. And so, uh, there are, no, there are, there are cases, and I think Tim's right, and it's a council question to say, are we willing to spend money on a court case for an issue like this? So there's a, there's a.
This is a fence on Manorville Avenue that doesn't meet any of our ordinances.
And they recently put it in?
Oh, I think it was, what?
It was last summer.
Yeah, it was during early July.
It didn't even meet the prior ordinance.
Right. The part of the issue was, so, what actually ended up happening was, the neighbor across the street started putting a fence in. And that's originally what, you know, was, it was, for whatever reason, I didn't notice it, nobody noticed it. You know, what it is, is it's a solid fence, and it's six feet high, and it's in the front yard.
And nobody can see through.
You can't see through it.
So it's a public safety issue.
Yeah. Well, you know, they, they're off the corner, so they meet the sideline on that, you know, from the stop. So I think, you know, they, they questioned the, that. The, the issue is that it's supposed to only be, you know, 36 inches high, or what.
In the front street side.
At the time, it was only supposed to be 30 inches high. The planning commission has changed it to be 36 inches high now. And so that was originally what sparked it, and, you know, they keep man originally saying, oh, well, we got big dogs. We've got big dogs that are, they'll get out if it's not high enough. And so then the question is, we run into, well, what do we do to deal with this, so.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, it's right. I mean, the question is, if it's a zoning violation, which it is, it sounds like it is, then the question is, how, how willing are you to enforce it? And how far are you willing to go? And if you're not willing to go all the way to enforce it, you can't pick and choose. Um, so it's a question of, is the code right, or should we have a different code? And what's the implication of changing the code? If it's something that's not aesthetically something you want, then it comes down to an enforcement thing. Question about what do other cities do? It all depends on the magnitude of the issue. And I would say some cities will go as far as saying, you got to follow laws and rules, and they'll enforce it.
The challenge here is, is we redid our ordinance to make sure that, you know, this doesn't happen, and if we don't enforce it, then we might as well just get rid of the ordinance we just put in place, and, you know, go back to just letting people, letting people put fences where they want.
Yep.
And how, and what style they want.
But even the prior code said you couldn't have one that high.
And we're not enforcing it. So now I can put a fence anywhere I want, any height that I want, because you're not enforcing the, the rule that was in place or anything. So it makes it hard to say, it makes it hard to stand on, you know, trying to regulate fences in, in town.
It's the non-glamorous part of our job, and non.
Personally, I think we're obligated to enforce it.
I would agree.
Uh, because they were in violation of the previous ordinance, and we had the opportunity to change it to allow them to become compliant, and we chose not to. And as a result, I think we're now obligated to enforce it. And I've made this statement in previous meetings, you know, we've, we are, I don't want to say woefully neglect, but we are neglect in doing some other zoning enforcement in the city, and it's only because we react to complaints. We do go out and seek issues that are violations of zoning ordinances.
And I will say that you are in the norm in doing it that way. Very few cities actually have an active code enforcement department that all they do is go look for zoning violations. Some do, most of them do not. Most of them, it's complaint-driven. But that portion of the business, it's, it is time-intensive, and it is political capital-intensive, too, because you have to make some very hard decisions. But it's one of those things where they're there, they're there for a reason, and you have to, you know, enforce them, or don't have them on the books.
This commission had the opportunity to change it. We changed it from 30 to 36, but we didn't enforce the, you know, change it to the 60 or 72, whatever the case may be. And the council did in kind, so I think we're obligated to enforce it.
Although I hope it's going to happen, you got one on 57, now everybody's going to put one up. Next thing you know, you're blocking, you're going to start blocking streets, and I think we have to.
I mean, they still can come in for a variance and, and, you know, go, I mean, the challenge is going through that process is not going to allow it to change. They lost that opportunity.
They can't meet the conditions for a variance.
I would caution ever jumping to the, you can, you know, you have the option to go through a variance, just because that puts you in a difficult spot. Like, you wouldn't ever grant a variance for dogs.
Yeah.
Even worse than that is, you technically shouldn't grant a variance because someone is handicapped, for example. Because that practical difficulty thing is not, it's not about someone's physical ability, it's about the property, and that's tough. So we always want to caution about going through the variance process. I, although I have communities, that's the way they like to do it. Because then it becomes a public, are your neighbors okay with it? Sure, all right. Well, grant the variance, and then it gets recorded on the property.
Then you get new neighbors.
Yeah. But once you grant the variance, and it's recorded, then, you know, future neighbors, they have to deal with that, if not. But that's the wrong, wrong way to do it.
But at the end of the day, it's not really this board's decision. I mean, it's a city council decision, so I don't know how you, you foster the conversation.
Well, I mean, if you'd like, I mean, we'll forward this issue up to the city council and put it on their agenda for their first meeting in January, and, you know, I think I'll send another letter, like you said, and I can invite them to try and come back to January's meeting.
Or even just have them come talk to you.
But I would say that, I would say, before, it's a city council decision. It's a city council decision if all of a sudden, the city has to expend legal resources to really fight something. But until then, it's, you know, you're in violation of the code, you need to bring it into compliance. If they refuse to do so, and force the city into a more labor-intensive, costly enforcement action, which means getting an attorney involved, writing an order, et cetera, et cetera, then I think that's where it becomes the council saying, okay, I'm going to the next, next level. Do you guys really want to do that?
If I could offer just a suggestion, that if another letter is sent, that he comes into compliance by August or September of 2022, because that gives them the opportunity to get through the construction phase of 57.
Yeah, and that's.
And then maybe provide the opportunity and the timing to, to make that change.
Yeah. I think that's a good suggestion. It gives them a long time to, you know, and then it, then, we don't have to deal with it until.
Well, I like that, too. That sounds pretty good.
But it also gives them a chance to.
Maybe you're thinking, January of 2023, Dwayne. Put two or three.
Yeah, we're in such a way that goes, you know, if you haven't brought it into compliance by August of 2022, the city will remove it at your expense. You know, that, that way it is brought to, ahead.
All right, is that, is that a motion?
Unless there's some flaw with the idea.
No, I think that, I think that timeline is fine. Once again, you know, this is an advisory body. You know, the council's going to make that final decision about if it's removed or not. I mean, my job is to try and remain, you know, conscious of protecting the city legally, which is that I, I, you know, this is an issue that I don't want to become. We had a lawsuit over a land use issue that probably blossomed out a little bit out of control, and, you know, we all know that. You know, it was once again, an enforcement thing, and it was an easy solution in the long run, but it was $100,000 in cost, so, you know, we don't want to go there again. So, I can't imagine that it will, but, that sounds good to me. I'll send out a notice, and, you know, I'll, what I'll do is, I'll do twofold. It'll be an invitation to come and discuss it with planning commission, you know, at any of our meetings, if they'd like to talk it over with you, or is that something you don't want to do?
Why does it have to be planning commission versus just city staff to come in and talk about?
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, from my perspective, I don't think they're going to come in here if I invite them to. Even if they do, there isn't a whole lot, I mean, I'm going to tell them that they need to take the fence down, and here's the guidance.
Yeah.
And they're going to say, well, we're not going to do that.
Well, but, but, part of it is coming in and trying to talk to all of us.
No, but part of putting it here, here versus city staff, it's all recorded, there's witness, everybody knows what's discussed. If you take it in the city staff, it's he said, she said, and then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind talking it over with them, if I, you know, if I thought it would be unofficial, it'd be great, I'd love to, you know. And this is good, because like you said, you give them time, they have every opportunity to change the fence out, and then at that point, if it really can't be resolved, then, yeah, we have to take some action.
I think the, the, the point you made about giving them a timeline, or something like that, is we're, we're being reasonable about it. You issue your order for compliance, they have the right to appeal.
Sure.
And so the appeal process, without looking at your code, I think probably comes to planning commission first, for a recommendation to the council. And so what I would say is, is you give them the order, this is it, we're willing to work with you on timing, here's our suggestion, give you through the construction season of 57, because it might be messy, so we're willing to do that. But you need to take it down at that point in time, and if you don't, then the city will be taking corrective action. I wouldn't say we're going to.
We're not saying take it down, we're just saying make it into compliance.
Bring it into compliance, right, right. We will, you need to bring it into compliance by this date, and if you don't, then the city will need to take corrective action. They have the right to appeal that decision, and then they can appeal that, and I, I can't remember, we'll have to maybe talk to Melanie about the timeline, which they have to determine to appeal it, because that is a, a big issue, too. If they, if they don't appeal it within that timeline, then they have no right to appeal. So that appeal process would come to planning commission for a recommendation to council.
There's no indication that there's any out here through a variance process, because he can't meet the variance standards.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I'm very happy to go through the process. By all means, you want to have that dialogue with the community and be as open and transparent about it as possible, but it doesn't matter who he talks to, we're going to come in and say, you know, these were the rules when you started the project, these are the rules after, you were never in compliance with any of them. So either bring it in compliance, or.
Do you need to make a note that it's either in compliance, or if you, you know, if there's a sale on the home, do you need to make sure that something takes place at that time? If there's, you know, if somebody were to just, you know, between now and then, somebody, somebody could say they're going to sell, you know, that it's either in compliance by September or prior to any sale. Because then you get another owner involved, who bought it as-is, and, you know, now you got a messy.
We'll work, we'll work through that. We'll, I'll, I'll check on that.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's good to have the conversation about it. I mean, it isn't, it isn't a crisis, but, you know, I think, you know, you guys are all right, we want to be consistent, and that's why we, we have the rules we do. And if we're not going to be willing to enforce them in the long run, I mean, I'm hesitant because I know the legal costs.
Mm-hmm.
I can understand your brightest perspective is, here's the law, you know, planning commission is lawbreakers, you know. You're bringing the boom, I like it.
Otherwise, it doesn't pay to set any.
Well, absolutely.
And you got to remove, then you got to remove our ordinance that there is, and amend it to say, okay.
Well, there could be an argument made that there's some, some potential issues with safety. I mean, they do meet that side, sideline in the corner relatively well, but it's definitely not the, it's not the best corner, because if you were coming from the northbound, going south, you might not, you know, if somebody was really pushed out, you might not. Okay, well, I'll plan on setting a date, maybe we'll talk about it a little bit, Brad, we can, we can wordsmith a letter together, and then we'll be looking at, you know, August or something like that, probably to set a deadline for them. Other than that, I haven't gotten a lot of other complaints, so I mean, everybody's been good right now, and the snow's covering everything that wasn't good, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for at least another day and a half.
Tough Thursday.
Tough Thursday, right. Brad, I think you were going to talk a little bit about your work plan for the next year, and Brad's had a few changes in his office.
Yeah, we had.
Share with you, go ahead, Brad.
Yep, so Laura Chamberlain, who has done some work with us, she decided to jump ship and go to a city. She'll be working for the city of St. Louis Park, and so she's no longer going to be here, which means you get the pleasure of having me at all these meetings, unless we decide to bring someone else in, which at this point in time, I think it's going to be mostly just me. I might have some other staff that provide support for me. But the person that will be here presenting, whether virtually or in person, will be me. So that, that's a big change. In terms of the, the work plan, one of the things that we do for a lot of the cities, or we provide services, or that I know a lot of cities will do, is they'll do a, a planning commission work plan. In other words, what are we going to work on when we're not doing day-to-day planning, stuff processing, variances in site plans and plats and whatnot? And so what we often do, and when clients reach out to us and say, you know, what, what should we be thinking about? We go to the comp plan and we look at the implementation chapter. And I, I was hoping to try to push something out in a packet, but I didn't have time to do that. So I went to the comp plan, and I just kind of looked through some of the implementation items on here. And we've actually done quite a few. We updated the zoning code. We have looked at a couple of park planning improvements. The Vale property is certainly one. We also did some exploration of some business park concepts on the east side of City Hall here, connecting streets. And that was in relation to a floodplain CUP project that came through. So some of those items are responsive, but also items that were identified in the implementation steps of things that we want to do. There are some things that are more longer-term that were, oh, we also did, made some clarity to the transportation plan with the diagram that, that will help us in communicating to people those connection points. That's a, a part that I actually used those in talking with the shooty concept. And then we, we did make some changes to the zoning code that weren't necessarily a factor of the comp plan implementation strategies, but were being responsive to economic development needs and responding to COVID, with the downtown drive-through for a coffee shop, and how do we process? So I guess my, my thought was just to throw it out there as a discussion item. If there are things that you're thinking of that are policy or land use-related or zoning-related, that we should be thinking about as updates or improvements in 2022? We can talk about those now, or if that's something where you want to spend some time thinking about it and coming back to us at the January meeting, we can have a more deeper discussion about that at the January meeting. The only thing that jumps out at me as, as really important, that would be helpful to us, is more parks-related. And I know we've talked with park staff about this and provided some very high-level tools. And that is trying to figure out more proactively where future parks might be, so that when a project comes in to propose a development in the concept plan, we can communicate to them early what kind of park we need, and the types of design configurations we want them to factor into the concept design. So we talk about park system plans, that's something that if we could find the funding for it, that would be a useful thing to do. And to have a more specific park structure and park system, so that that can be communicated to people early when they come to bring annexation into the property. They know there's no park on my property, so it's going to be a park dedication. Or, oh, they know we need a park, and we need to figure out how that fits into the design. And to the extent that we can communicate those things in advance from a design perspective, how it adds value to their property, early and often, that's something that that park system plan would do as well. And a, a big piece of that is, when people design parks, not having remnant pieces of land in people's backyards with a little bit of stub of access, which is what often the, the engineering and plating world does, because they don't see the value that parks bring to a neighborhood. So to communicate that and to show how you can design those, I think is a, a big asset to do. So that's the only thing on my list that would be nice for us to have, that we can push out to people in advance and help people understand as they're thinking about development, how parks play into the picture. And then we would connect, connect the dots with the trail and sidewalk network, which we already have pretty good policy to do that, and pretty big, big ideas in a map to do that. But with that, if there's any thoughts or questions or ideas that people have for things we should be focusing on for 2022?
So with this park plan, is that the chicken or the egg? Meaning, should we be taking action first, or should it be the park board?
I would say it's the park board that would lead that process, yeah. And the planning commission would be there only from a land use guidance standpoint. So it would be more the park board. You would just have a, a role as a board, kind of looking at it and having input into it.
The other thing that has concerned me, and we've had several over the last few years come across is PUDs. Establishing more concrete design standards for PUDs, particularly our streets. Because we've got some PUDs that we have allowed for narrower streets.
Right.
And I think Joe can probably attest, it's probably not something that we want. And I'm sure our streets department would agree with that, too. So we may want to consider getting out in front of that.
I know we have, we have guided on the construction itself. So, I mean, you, you're well aware of some of the PUD streets, the private roads that were designed, you know, previously that were not really designed, I mean, parts of South or, you know, Abbey Lane, you know, they're, they're, they're not good roads.
Right.
And now I think we do guide them that they have to meet the same standard for city-street construction. But with would be, would be a question there in terms of, I know that with that PUD process, we've allowed the developers more flexibility, but what should that be?
Streets and. Yeah, but we've made decisions reactionary and not proactive. Where we said, this is what our design standard is for a PUD. We've had PUDs come and say, well, we don't have enough property, we want narrower streets. And so now we're reacting to what they're requesting, instead of us telling them in advance that this is what we need.
Well, I mean, I think the PUD process as a whole is probably something we should take a look at next year, especially if we have time.
Yeah.
Extra time. I think that's a really good, that's a really good topic to talk about. Because I know the state's changing some of the rules, too. I mean, I, I read about it in the metro where they're, you know, the granny pods and the, you know, we had someone come in today talking about building a duplex in their backyard, and.
ADUs?
Exactly, the, you know, extra units and people's, you know, uh, you know, and they haven't brought a permit to us or anything like that, and Linda's going to stop on it when it comes in. But, you know, well, but I'd rather be able to tell them, hey.
Absolutely, yeah.
Here's the deal, you can't do it, or you can do it. You know, like, I looked at the property after the person came in, and, you know, it's potentially viable. You know, they've got townhome units across the street that, you know, you, you know, it's not, wouldn't necessarily be real pretty, but, you know, and, because that's a real thing. You know, property's not getting any cheaper, and people are trying to be more efficient with it. I mean, Aaron's well aware of, you know, he's got a very efficient design on a smaller parcel in town, you know, and, and so, I mean, we got to be open to some of those things. But having that guidance right away and saying, this is the rules, and here's how it's going to be done, probably a good discussion.
The other thing may be these large lot developments, because we've got potential, we're shooting tonight, we've got common acres, we've got littles. What prevents a property owner out there wanting to subdivide their large lot? And what does that do to the neighborhood?
Sure.
That, that also may be a discussion worth having.
Well, and probably just a discussion about the long-term viability of large lots, period.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, you know, the council and the planning commission, you know, forwarded, you know, they allowed common acres. You know, is that our highest and best use of property? I mean, I, I wouldn't be surprised if this development in the southwest, you know, because of the lay of the land, the water draws and things like that, it may, it may make sense for them to do a little bit larger lots. It's possible, I don't know, maybe they won't, but, but, you know, that's definitely a question, too.
Trying to determine what the proper mix is.
Right.
Those are good, good discussion items.
Anything you guys have got to talk about over the next year here? I mean, I think, you know, think about it, too, if you've got something, just email it to me or Brad directly, that's fine, and, because we'll get it on the agenda. And, I mean, I don't think we're going to probably, based on what I'm seeing right now, we may not have quite as busy of a year with actual subdivisions. You know, we have a lot of lots coming out with Big Le void, and, well, that's true. We just annexed a hundred and twenty acres with the same limit, so who knows? But, but, um.
So it's all good, so it's just a matter of managing it.
Well, we got four houses up at, up, started up in Meadowbrook. So that, that'd be another one I could see him popping on. And, I mean, when that northeast corner starts going, it's probably not going to take that long. So, I mean, it's possible, but I do think it may be, there may be a little lull. So we may have some time next year to work on some of these products where we want to fine-tune things. The other thing is, we have a consistent board. One thing I wanted to remember just before we forget, Tom, you were reappointed at council. And I didn't get yours in before the meeting, but the mayor said he's comfortable with that, so we should have a nice, consistent board next year, so some good institutional knowledge. So we don't have to worry about that too much, and, so that's a good thing, too, just from your guys' essay.
So we'll, we'll put a list together, and then we'll, what we'll do with that list is kind of outline what we'll do as part of it. And then we just need to talk about who does it and how it gets funded, because it's, it's a budget impact, you need to be cognizant of that.
I mean, on a day-to-day basis, or week by week, month by month, are there issues that you and Linda are dealing with as it pertains to this body that would be a focus? I mean, is there, is there anything we can do to improve the, the pain that you guys go through?
You know, I think we've improved our process this year a lot with subdivisions. We put a lot of time into that. There wasn't as good, there wasn't, it wasn't as good of a process with documentation. I think that's been probably an issue for the city for years. And so I think our process with recording and things like that has gotten a lot better this year. So that's one thing we've dealt with. Um, you know, I don't know that there's a lot of, you know, we deal with a lot of day-to-day permits and things like that, but not stuff that would really come to planning commission's attention. Usually, this fence thing is, is the one where, you know, it's just going to pop up once in a while with something, whereas, like I said, this fellow would have brought that documentation in, we would have said, okay, well, you started it before the thing happened, and it's fine. But they don't always do that, so, you know. But if something does come up, I'm certainly always glad to bring it to you. It's a good thing to bring up.
We had very few variances this year.
Which was good.
What, three, two?
That's fine.
But it had to do with subdivisions.
Yeah, so that is a sign that things are working. If we had fifteen variance requests or ten variance requests, and we had a lot of approvals of those variances, then that's a sign of, you know, maybe we need to, need to tighten something up or fix something up, so.
And I don't pay attention to these things, I, I live across the street from the old school, but did somebody buy that, or was there an offer and a lawsuit?
You know, there was, there was an offer and there's a lawsuit, which the city is not involved with whatsoever. Thankfully, we're not involved with it. Uh, but I don't think anything's changed there right now.
I, I could just see from a zoning standpoint that really being a challenge if somebody's got high aspirations as to what they want to do.
I mean, they did present to, I think, was it, fellow's name's Paul, Paul something or other, and he did present to council back in, was that September? Do you remember, Dan?
A while, yeah.
It was a while ago, and he does have a, an idea with, you know, he'd like to, to, to turn that into apartments. You know, and I think he was looking at, I don't know, thirty units or something like that. And, but at this time, you know, I haven't heard anything from him for three or four months, so, I mean, you know, that's, that's a difficult project, because it's a limited site, especially if you're trying to maintain the historical component of it. So, I mean, I think it would be ideal if something could happen there, now what that means, I don't know. But, you know, I drove past it the other night, you know, on Saturday night, it's like, you know, it's dark, and, you know, it's, it's kind of a spot in town where it could use some, some work, but.
It's contingent on like tax credit.
Tax credit, those tax credit projects are always really difficult, because CASA doesn't necessarily qualify very highly for some of those, too, so. But, yeah, I mean, that's something, if, if we get any more information of that, that could certainly be on the agenda, too.
The thing, too, that we've been getting a lot of questions on, and the person that came into the office today, it's Bruce Pressure's property. That the back of, behind the house, because it's a long skinny lot, is all staked out. So the neighbors are calling, going, what's he doing? We heard he's putting townhomes in, and it's like, well, he can't. And he doesn't have any access to that back piece, you know. So they said, well, it's all staked out, and he said this is what he's going to do. And I said, well, if he, we, we don't know anything besides what people are telling us.
Who is it again, Bruce, who?
Bruce Pressure, it's at two oh one Eighth Avenue Northwest.
I've had conversations with him about the property, and he's always told me, no, I don't plan to do anything.
But he has not, he has not approached the city, he has not come in and told us anything, he's got stakes in the yard. And I just told the person today, I said, well, if he comes in with a building permit, it's going to get halted, because you can't have more than one primary resident.
Sometimes people just do things just to stir the pot, you know, you can put stakes in your yard just to get people talking.
Doesn't happen in this town? That's never happened.
So that's, it actually, I've had, besides the guy that came in today, I've had like two or three phone calls about his property, saying this is what he's doing, and it's like, until he actually brings us something, we don't know that's what he's doing. And I said, let me know if he breaks ground, because then we can do something about it, but. The neighbors are watching him.
Yeah, sure. Um, but that's, that's, I mean, well, if you guys think of anything else over the next couple of weeks here, just let us know, that'd be great. And we can get Brad guided, you know, guided onto what we want to look at for next year. There's always things we have to clean up with the code and stuff like that, too, so.
Wonderful.
All right.
Anything else anybody would like to discuss? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, thank you again.
Yes, and.
We don't see you again, have a happy holiday, enjoy yourselves.
Yes.
Get our thunderstorm on, on Wednesday here and see what happens, so.